I'd like to call the meeting of the North Little Rock Planning Commission to order, please. If you would, everyone, please turn off your cell phones. Ms. Kiesha, would you please call the roll?
Banks, Blasko, Chambers.
Present.
Dietz, Foster.
Here.
Phillips.
Harris.
Present.
Wallace.
Chairman Clifton.
Here. Do you hear a motion?
Motion is approved.
Motion made and seconded that those commissioners absent be excused. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. If you're here for item number seven, to allow a car sales lot in a C4 zone located at 3125 Pike Avenue, that has been postponed, so we will not be hearing that today, so if you're here for that item, you're welcome to stay with us, or you may be excused. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes of our previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to those?
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded to be approved as submitted. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. With that, we will move right into our Design Review Committee. Mr. Don Chambers, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a lengthy meeting, items A through L, so please bear with me. The applicant for item A, SD 2018-7, was present and agreed to items one through 11 and subsections, and that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This item be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item B is SD 2018-13, Argenta Edition, Lot 10R, site plan review of all 4.1 eatery located at 515 North Olive Street. Applicant was present, agreed to items one through nine and subsections, and that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This item be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item C is SD 2018-14, American Tower Edition, Lot 1, preliminary plat and site plan review of a cell tower located at 12,005 Faulkner Lake Road. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through nine and subsections, and with that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. White?
Mr. Chambers, what kind of poll is it gonna be? Is it gonna be a flagpole?
I understand it's a 180-foot monopole.
Okay. So it's gonna have all...
I don't know if the applicant's present, but he could answer your question specifically.
Is the applicant for this here?
Yes, sir.
Please come up. Give us your name for the record, please.
My name is Scott Lewellen.
Mr. Lewellen, did you hear Mr. White's question?
Yes, sir. It's gonna be 180-foot monopole design, and it will be lit as well.
Will be lit?
Yes, sir. That was a request of a planning commissioner at our first hearing.
Aircraft light on top.
Okay, aircraft light.
Thank you.
It's also out in the middle of the swamp.
Okay. Any comments from anyone in the audience on this application? Any other comments from the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I need to abstain.
Let the record show that Mr. Steve White abstained on this last application.
Item D is SD 2018-16, Central Arkansas I-40 Business Park, Lot 7, site plan review of an addition to an industrial building located at 900 Fiber Optic Drive. Applicant was present, he agreed to items one through nine and subsections, and with that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone, comments, anyone in the audience? Any comments? Pardon?
No, it's good.
Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item E is SD 2018-17, Lisa Academy, North Subdivision, Lot 1, replant and site plan review of a new high school located at 4600 Briley Drive. Applicant was present, agreed to items one through 11 and subsections, and with that Development Review Committee recommends approval. I'm sorry, one through 13 in subsections, and we recommend approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item F is SD 2018-18, Park Hill Edition, Lot 1, Block 100, a preliminary plat and site plan review of a commercial building located at 4113 JFK Boulevard. Applicant was present, agreed to items one through 11 and subsections, and with that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that this application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Deitz?
Which item was that? Okay, 4131 JFK on the last item. Got it. That was SD 2018-18 when you're taking notes.
Thank you, Mr. Deitz.
Item G is SD 2018-19, Argenta Plaza Edition, Lots 1 through 9, preliminary plat of a new commercial subdivision located at the 600 block of Main Street. Applicant was present, agreed to items one through seven and subsections, and with that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Chairman, I need to abstain from that vote.
Please let the record show that Mr. Foster abstained from the past vote.
Item H is SD 2018-20, Argenta Plaza Edition, Lot 1, site plan review of Argenta Plaza. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through 10 and subsections, and with that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item SD 2018-21, Argenta Plaza, Lot 4, site plan review of First Orion Offices located on West 6th Street. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through nine and subsections, and with that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. The application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item J is SD 2018-22, Argenta Plaza Edition, Lot 5, site plan review of a parking lot at a southwest corner of West 6th and North Magnolia Street. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through nine and subsections, and with that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item K is SD 2018-23, Argenta Plaza Edition, Lot 6, site plan review of an office building at 600 Main Street. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through 10 and subsections, and with that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Chairman, I need to abstain from that one also.
Please let the record show that Mr. Foster abstained from the past vote.
Item L, SD 2018-24, Argenta Plaza Edition, Lot 7, site plan review of a parking lot between Bishop Lindsey and West 6th Street. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 10 and subsections, and with that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That concludes the report of the Development Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers.
Good job, Mr. Chambers.
We'll move into our public hearing portion of our meeting, and the first case, a special use case number 2018-2, to allow a mobile home in an R2 zone located at 7001 Faulkner Lake Road. Is the applicant here? Yes, please come up and give us your name, please.
Billano Davis.
Okay, Mr. Davis, you attended a Design Review Committee meeting and detailed what your intentions were, and you were given a list of recommendations. Do you have that?
Yes, sir. I completed all of that already. Yes, sir.
And are you okay with those commission, or the conditions that were placed on the application?
I am.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Yes, ma'am, please come up and give us your name, please.
My name is Tony Baker. I live at 7300 Faulkner Lake Road, which is just across the street from this piece of property.
Okay, and your objection?
Okay, first of all, I was here last month, and I was told to contact everyone on the commission. I attempted to do that this morning, and three of them, one has a number that is not referred, it is referred as an unknown number. That's the first one, Banks. Malesko, they have a recording that automatically drops off, so you can't leave a message there. And then there was another one that James, or Jim Dias, that his number's been disconnected. Okay, so I couldn't get ahold of those people. And I did talk to Tim, and he was gonna try to update the website, but I could not get into the website this afternoon to get any information, so you've got at least three people that can't be contacted about anything. Okay? So then, then, there was a question of my neighbor across the street, Don Winstead, did not get a certified letter this time, and then I talked to Sean. Sean said he didn't have to. All they had to have was proof that they sent it. And I don't know how they have proof that they sent it, because the post office doesn't give you anything until that letter comes back. All you have is a number, and you don't know who when you send that many out. So, because, you know, and then, okay, I'm sorry, I'm shaking. Okay, in the eighties, the city of North Little Rock decided that there will be no more mobile homes near or in the city. And Mr. Clifton probably knows that well, 'cause he had a mobile home at that time for his mother down there that was in use, and they said that they would let that one stay in the city. Okay, so then, there were three from 6600 block on Lynch to the 7500 block on Faulkner Lake Road, which, you know, that's one road, and it changes at 6624. And they were told at that time that when they moved out of those mobile homes, that they could not be rented, that they had to be moved out of the city. And then, in 1986, I purchased 25 acres across the street, knowing there weren't gonna be any mobile homes out there anymore, because the city had already taken care of that. And my home's valued at like 385, plus I have 24 acres that are industrial commercial property. And I am not in favor of a mobile home across the street, 'cause I'm soon to be selling my place, and I don't want the value of my home to go down because this mobile home is sitting there. Now, truthfully so. I cannot see it from the road, but as I drive down the road, I can see it. It's very upsetting. And also, we have two neighbors that bought a home, one that is, there are two neighbors across the street from me, and the brick home is in the back. He bought that home last year, moved in, and redid the whole inside. He was planning on staying there. Well, he's not planning on staying there now, 'cause he's got a mobile home out there. And the mobile home, from my understanding, has been there a while. And then, my neighbors at 6624 Lynch, they did the same thing. They bought a home, and they went and put 20-something thousand dollars in that house to redo the inside, so that they could live there. And it's just a shame that this has been the way that it's been done, because I tried to talk to this man several times, he wouldn't stop and talk to me at all. And also, Don wanted me to talk for him, and he's at the address of 7317, which is the back brick, where the, on the other side of the property is where this mobile home is. And then Lynn is here, he's at 7329. Their side yard has been torn up, and they had told these people that they did not have the authority to have access to get in and out of their property on. That property's been tore up. You know, we've had so much rain in the last two to three months, and like Lynn was out there yesterday, or the day before, he broke his mower out there, and the, and Don Winstead told me, he broke his mower also out there trying to mow, and this is where they have told him not to be on their property.
What piece of property are you referring to now?
The property's in front of the, this mobile home.
Okay.
They got access, they asked for access to their property, and they were told no, but it didn't matter, they went ahead and did it. And when their gates closed, their friends, or whoever, continued to use this property.
You talking about the applicant here?
Yes.
It's our understanding he does have legal access to his property.
Not of their property.
Oh, no, no. I understand it's not something across his property.
He's got a driveway over here. There's shrub here. And these two men at 7309.
Right.
And 7317, and his address is 7001 behind them.
Okay.
Okay? He does not have access there, but he's been using it. Tractor trailers, concrete trucks, bringing a mobile home. And like I say, we've had so much rain that the property, you can't ride it. I wouldn't take my zero turnover there for anything. You know, so, you know, we're not encouraged or in favor of it at all.
And it's, I'm sorry, Ms. Baker.
Baker.
Now, is your, your property is, is in the city limits?
Yes. They're on the other side.
Right. So the subject property, I think, is outside the city limits.
It's outside, but it gets services of the city.
Right, right. We have jurisdiction over that, I understand.
Right.
But your property is in the city limits.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else?
All right. Okay, thank you, Ms. Baker. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this application? Okay, any comments from any of the commissioners?
Ask the owner applicant if he cares to respond.
I will. Mr. Davis, would you like to respond to some of her comments?
Sure, yes, sir. When I first started on the property, my land was landlocked, and I had to get an easement, which they drew my easement to come up his property. I took it to him, showing him this who my easement was supposed to be. He didn't want me to come up at his property, so that was okay. So I purchased the other three acres on the other side of him, so I can get to my property. So I don't, I try to stay away from him as much as possible, as possible, me, my wife and kids, I just wanna put my family out there in the country and just raise a family, sir.
Okay, let me ask you, have, have you had perk tests done on this property out there or anything?
Yes, sir, I have.
And it's been approved as a standard system?
Yes, sir.
What about water?
I have, I have water, electricity, and everything.
Okay. Okay.
Living on the property?
Sir.
Have you lived in the, in the property?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay.
Just to add to it, James Rogers Excavation Company, I just put $70,000 into my property because it's in a flood zone to take care of all the water situations. So I don't plan on their property value going down. The double-wide trailer I put in cost 155,000, and I'm still building a home there. I don't want their property value to go down, of course, I do not want that.
Okay, this is a new mobile home?
Yes, sir, brand-new, 155,000.
All right. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir. Did I hear you correctly that you're gonna build a home out there?
Yes, sir, that was my whole purpose. I'm building a home.
Okay, so the, the trailer's there temporarily for both security and all, for you to build a home?
Yes, sir. The trailers are temporary. I was paying lease somewhere else for 1,500 a month, so I just wanted to put a little mobile home there until I was able to build my home and save a little money. And at the same time, I understand a mobile home is kind of looked down upon, so instead of getting a single-wide 40,000 or 50,000 dollar trailer, that's why I wouldn't spend 155,000, so I wouldn't just make anyone mad.
Mr. Davis, what's your timeframe for moving into a permanent resident there, building a permanent resident there?
I'm looking at a year. Like I said, I got James Rogers Excavation Company getting everything situated now. They're out there now getting everything done. So as soon as they get the flood plain area situated, I'm gonna start building, sir. I hope to have it done within a year.
Is it your intent to remove the mobile home after the residence is built?
Yes, sir. I'll put it on my commercial property on pro, I have a small trucking business on pro that I leased from Mike Berg, so I will put it out there on that premises.
Okay. Okay, any other comments from any of the commissioners? Yes, ma'am.
Can you make it clear?
No, ma'am, please come to the microphone.
In the event that he does build a home there, that, at the time that he builds that home, can we, having a, and a condition on that, that the mobile home be moved, so that no family moves in there to the mobile home? That it be a one resident instead of something that's left there to rent or move family in? Because, you know, that, you know, you've seen what's been done in the city of North Little Rock with mobile homes. There's a mobile home, and we move, and we build a home, and we put Suzie and Joe over there, and then it comes along that Jack needs a place to live, so we put another mobile home. We just, you know, I understand the money that he has spent there and everything, but at the same time, I would like to see that mobile home to be removed when that home is built.
Okay, thank you.
If we could do that.
Mr. Foster?
Ms. Baker, would you be amenable to allowing him like a two-year window to live in his mobile home, build a new house, and move the mobile home? Would you be amenable to, or agreeable to that for two years?
Is that what you're planning on doing? Like I say, I have time to talk to you.
He said, he said one year, but I'd like to give him a little leeway. That's a pretty tight schedule. I'd like to say maybe two years, at least.
Two to three.
Three.
Three years? Okay.
But when you move in it, you know, I just don't want a sign of that being there, because it's gonna hurt your property too, trust me. Because we had this problem when Delta Lawn was a pretty good rental property at that time, and in the eighties, and I had some there, and we were having problems with renting our property or selling it because of the three mobile homes there and the two more out the road, so.
I promise I won't put no more mobile, um, I, I have a mobile home, and we can go and...
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chambers?
I didn't know he was in the flood plain, but there are also some guidelines about homes being built in flood, flood plain, and you need to be aware of those before you start building?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I have to talk with the manager.
Thank you. Mr. Chambers?
I believe I was gonna do, Mr. White's gonna do and add the condition?
No, I'm gonna do one of the, I'm gonna ask a question to Sean first, and then do what you wanna do.
Okay, go ahead and ask your question.
Sean?
Yes, sir.
Once he moves out of the trailer, because it's conditional use, that's done, right? Or is it not done?
It's a special use.
I gotta say, conditional use.
There's conditions for a special use.
Okay.
So when he moves out, it's done, yes.
He's done.
Another one cannot move in.
He can't do that anyway. When he moves out of that, we're doing it with, correct me if I'm wrong, with him. We're not doing it with the trailer. So the minute they move out to move a new home, he can't rent it out, he can't give it to his kids, he's, he's out. Is that correct?
Yeah. So we, we'd be working with the county, since it's in the county, but they wouldn't be able to move into the house until the trailers. So there'd be some, it's already in place to do it that way, but we can put it in a special use if you want to.
Okay. My intention was to add a condition that upon moving into your new residence, that the mobile home has to be removed from the property.
Within three years.
I have no problem with that. The only condition with that, when they move that, three years down the line, hopefully everybody be happy, we be smiling at each other, but they gonna have to move it down the right side of that easement where I was supposed to have an easement at.
I see. What, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. White?
First of all, it's a legal easement. No offense to anybody here, it's a legal easement. Is, is that correct, Mr. Deitz?
I think so.
'Cause he's in real estate, so it's a legal easement, so.
But like I said.
You have that right anyway.
If he teeks down, that's why I purchased the other three acres on the other side.
Yeah.
He didn't want me coming to his property.
Yeah. But a legal easement is a legal easement.
To his property.
Yeah, to his property. You have to have a right to get to your property.
I guess, I think what he's saying is that he can't get the, the home out without using that easement. It can't go down his new easement that he purchased.
Right, and that's the point that I'm making, is he has the right to do that.
Right.
If everybody wants the trailer out, then everybody's gonna have to, to get along. So if we, we add the three-year period, the three-year period would start from today, or start from the date the city council approves it?
Right.
Okay, is everybody in agreement with that?
Ms. Kiesha, did I make, did I make that condition properly? No, I did not. Okay. I guess I would like to add the condition that the, y'all help me get this right, the mobile, mobile home shall be removed from the property within six months of, of moving into your new home.
That's quite good, sir.
Is that okay? We can't, we can't control the easement issue.
Just say it needs to be removed in three years, period.
Period. That's, that's the point. Let me, let me do it. Is it okay if I do that?
Go ahead, go ahead. Okay. What we'd like to add on there is, is as far as a condition, is that three years from the date of approval from the city council, that trailer has to be moved. Is that correct, Mr. Spencer?
Yes, sir.
Is, is that all right?
Yes, sir, I agree with that, sir.
Okay, spine?
Yes, sir.
Does it need to be modified to move out?
Are you okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and we have a second.
Ms. Baker, does that, motion made and seconded, does that alleviate your problem with it? Thank you. Okay, motion made and seconded. Please read the motion back, Ms. Kiesha.
Motion was made, three-year from the date of approval from city council, the mobile home has to be removed.
Correct. That will be, uh, motion to add to the special conditions for approval of this application. All in favor for the special, or for the addition of the application? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, will be added to the conditions. On the application, please call the roll as amended. Please call the roll on the application as amended.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Harris? I'm sorry, Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Mr. White?
We have a lot of groups coming from us and they never work together, so I wanna thank both groups for working together.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's just great. So anyway, thank y'all.
Very good. Uh, item number two on our agenda, special use case number twenty-four, twenty-eighteen dash four, to allow a daycare center in a C-one zone located at two thousand Finley Drive in North Little Rock. Is the applicant here? Please come up and give us your name, please.
My name is Carmel Boyd.
Ms. Boyd, you have been to the design review committee and you were given some conditions to be considered on your application, have you looked at those?
Yes, I have.
Do you agree with those?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any, Mr. White, or Mr. Chambers?
Yes, I have one question, uh, just for my own amusement, because Ms. Blasko always has a great reaction. Exactly how many children, well, not exactly, but approximately, how many children are you, may you be approved for?
Maybe about two, about a little bit over two hundred.
That's what I was waiting for, thank you. You don't have to work there, Ms. Blasko. Anyway, it's, it's a, it's a large facility and it really is, and it's, it's suitable for this use. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any other comments, many of the commissioners?
Uh, other than that this is a really good site for this use, uh, I found it very nice, yeah.
Uh, on the application, please call the roll.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster? Phillips?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass. If you will, uh, get with Mr. Spencer, he can tell you what to do next, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item number three, special use case number twenty-eighteen dash five, to allow an appraisal business and a residence in the same building in a C-two zone located at two hundred, or number two, East Fifty-Six Place in North Little Rock. Is the applicant here? Please come up and give us your name.
My name is Brian Owens.
Have you been able to look at the conditions, uh, that were recommended for this application?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with those?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners?
Yes, sir, this is a...
Ms. Chambers?
This is a typical C-six use and we're just accomplishing it by giving a special use in a C-two zone. So I see no problem with it.
Very good. On the application, please call the roll.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets? Foster? Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what to do.
All right.
Thank you. Item number four, special use case number twenty-eighteen dash six, to allow two seasonal high tunnels in an R-three zone located at the end of Pow- Power Line Drive. Please come up and give us your name, please.
My name is Pat Coleman.
Okay, uh, Mr. Coleman, you were at the design review committee and, uh, some, uh, conditions were given to be considered. Have you inspected those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with those?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Spencer, has there been anyone, uh, in contact about this?
The property owner that's to the north of this has called, uh, is the person that owns the property that the power lines go on, and she was basically just inquiring about what was going on. And so with one of the conditions be to show that there, you have permission, um, you're gonna wanna talk to her, so. But she did, she was not against anything, just wondering what's going on.
I'd be happy to. I just need, uh, her name and, uh, how to contact her.
Okay, any, uh, comments from anyone in the audience? Any comments, many of the commissioner, Mr. White?
What, what is your address, again? What is your address, I'm sorry, your address, your home address?
My home address?
Yes, sir.
Uh, six-two zero eight Tammy Lane. Uh, it's sip code seven-two one-one-seven.
All right, how, how are you, do you have an easement to this property? Cause it says it's landlocked, is that correct?
It is.
So you're gonna go through the power lines to get to it?
No, sir. Uh, I, I intend to buy, uh, property on Lynch that I will be able to access it. I'm waiting for, uh, fifty-two nineteen is vacant. Uh, I know the, I do not know the owner, but I know where he lives and I plan on making, uh, contact with him and see if we can work something else or work something out.
Okay.
Uh, but that house has been on and off vacant for a long time. And that would be the best, uh, one to, uh, put a eas- uh, put the road in for the, uh, fire marshal and his emergency vehicle. But also, uh, fifty-two, uh, fifty-two eleven will be, uh, you know, that's adjoining my property. That will also work if it becomes available, but it's occupied. And I believe, uh, fifty-two, uh, fifteen is a rental and it's occupied. So I might have to, you know, it might be, uh, until I could really purchase the land, where I could put the, uh, road on my, my land instead of somebody else's land is my plan. And, and the best one would be fifty-two nineteen.
Okay.
Fifty-three nineteen, I'm sorry.
But I guess my question is, if we're gonna do this now, how are you gonna, how are you gonna get the equipment in there to do it? If you don't have an easement and you don't have a home to get through there?
Well, uh, my access now is, uh, power line.
Okay, that's what I was asking. So, and that's one of the conditions, so, okay. And that's the lady that you're, okay, I'm, I'm good. Okay. I just wanna make sure you had an easement since we had that other issue a minute ago.
Any other comments, many commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass, see Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what to do.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Our next item is rezone case number twenty-eighteen dash six and conditional use case number twenty-eighteen dash three, to rezone property located at forty-six hundred Riley Road from I-one to R-two to allow for a new high school. Is the applicant here? Please come up.
Hello?
Give us your name for the record, please.
Ed Hankins with McCollum Engineers.
Okay, uh, you were at the design review committee and some considerations for conditions were talked about there. Do you have a copy of those?
Yes.
And are you familiar with those two and agreeable to them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass, see Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what to do.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Next, next item, uh, number six is rezone case number twenty-eighteen dash seven, to rezone property located at forty-nine oh-one Allen from O-one to R-three to allow for a residential development. Is the applicant here? Okay, who's gonna be speaking? Okay?
Thomas Poundell with Thomas Engineering.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chambers?
Uh, yes, Mr. Poundell, do, do, does the applicant plan to, uh, tear down the building or renovate it?
Building's gonna be torn down.
Okay, so it'll be the, uh, just flat land and then build houses?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Bill Plunkett. And we're the guys that are gonna be building this. And we're excited about it. The school, as you probably know, has become blighted and it's in bad shape. And we're actively trying to get that torn down now. Uh, in fact, as soon as we get money and we already passed the first committee towards getting that money. So it looks like that's gonna take place. We will build, uh, as many as eleven habitat houses on this property. They will all meet, Sean, all the requirements. I think you've seen the plan for that. We're gonna put in a U-Shoe Road, five houses facing Allen, six behind them. And, uh, as far as the city's concerned, the baseball fields, the park behind on the little hill, all stay. So we're not messing with any of that. We're excited, this is a great neighborhood. These houses typically appraised from ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. I think they'll increase the value of the property around it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, many of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass, see Mr. Spencer, he can tell you what to do. Thank you. Number seven? Yes, sir. Number seven has been postponed. Number eight is conditional use case number twenty-eighteen dash five, to allow a parking lot in a C-six zone located at Lot Five, Argent Place Edition. Is the applicant here? I see you standing there.
I am, sir, Thomas Poundell with Thomas Engineering.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Chambers?
Just as some history, when the C-six zone was created back in ninety-seven or ninety-eight, the intent of the C-six zone was to create an urban environment and there was no parking requirement, which is in line with new urbanism trends. Didn't realize we're ahead of the game at that time, but we were. The, uh, if you want a parking lot, you need to ask for a conditional use permit to get a parking lot in C-six. So that's why this is before us, otherwise it'd just be a typical part of developments to have a parking lot with your building. But not so in C-six, you actually have to ask permission for one.
Okay. All right, very good. Any other comments, many of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets? Foster? Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Item number nine, conditional use case number twenty-eighteen dash six, to allow a parking lot in a C-six zone located on Lot Seven, Argent Plaza Edition. Uh, Mr. Poundell, is there any comments from anyone in the audience on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets? Foster? Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White? Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass, see Mr. Spencer and he can tell you where to go next.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Item number ten on our agenda is conditional use case number twenty-eighteen dash seven, to allow an auto window tinning business in a C-three zone located at thirteen one-twenty Crist- Crystal Hill Road. Is the applicant here? Yes, give us your name for the record, please.
Justin Lamb.
Okay. Mr. Spencer, has anyone, uh, has there been any comments to the office about this?
Have not received any.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets? Foster? Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass, see Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what to do. Okay, we move into our public comment portion of our meeting. Is there anyone that has any public comments they would like to, uh, bring forth? Mr. White?
I do, I have three. Sean? The new apartments that they're building by the high school, uh, North, uh, North Rock Northeast by the other apartments, is there a concern that they're just on, on the hillcuts on that property? Cause it looks like they've just kinda destroyed the whole mountain.
Uh, city engineer's office, they, they have a plan that both the fire marshal and the city engineers reviewed, but they, they are doing some, uh, blasting, so may...
Cause I'm getting calls on that. And the second question is, they've recently made a road out to North Hills. Are they putting a curb cut there?
The only one that I know of is the one that's existing that had the little gravel road that went back. Is that the one that you're talking about?
Yeah, it goes to North Hills, but the curb has not been cut, but that's not gonna be a permanent on and off.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
It's their main way in and out.
That, that's because it runs through the wetlands, that's the only one that's allowed is the existing one.
So it's not gonna go back through the other apartments and go...
Now, there's a rear, there'll be a rear entrance.
But we're gonna allow a new one right there and they're gonna be able to...
It's, it's existing.
Okay. No, it's not existing, this is brand new, just been bulldozed.
Then it's a temporary then.
Mr. White, it was always been there, it was a little tiny culvert, a little tiny narrow dirt road, about eight or ten feet wide through the marsh.
The cur- the curve has never been cut?
No, the curb wasn't cut, it was a service access.
So technically, it looks like they just, so they're gonna be able to, and they'll be able to turn a left?
Yeah, but it's traffic signaled everything.
Okay, and they are gonna put a traffic signal there, so I did not...
They agreed to do.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've had that question and I didn't know the answer to it.
I mean, that'd be up to, I mean, we could see engineer to answer that one directly, but I understand, yes, sir.
Okay, I got another question, um, and I don't know the name of the street. It's behind, uh, the Regions Bank on JFK. There's a road that's right behind there, that they built a house there about two years ago and there's no driveway. And once they decided they couldn't get a car up and down there, the house has just stopped.
We're in court over on that one.
Do what?
We've been in court for two years on that one.
Oh, good.
We're, we're on top of it, but nothing...
So I'm, I'm one for, I'm one for one, I got a good answer and a, and we're in court for the second answer. The last one is, I know, I got one more to go. Every time I go to US Pizza Company down in Levy, when I leave, there's, there's this car lot, I think it's called Bryant's Car Lot, where they work on cars, it's an old gas station.